Joining us tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance is Aiden McLean. Aiden is a sixth grader at Case Elementary. His favorite subject right now is gym and when he grows up, he would like to be a name. He has been a dedicated member of my campaign team for longer than he cares to admit and I'm proud to call him our son. So he is going to lead us tonight if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the ideal with liberty and justice for
And as we get started, it's really good to see so many friendly faces of all of our friends and family that have joined us here tonight. Want to take just a second and recognize a few of those that are elected officials and dignitaries as well that have come out, that have supported us on the campaign trail. Some of them are here to swear in to various positions tonight. Gazelle Smith, former county councilperson, Judge Ron Cable, Judge Nicole Walker, clerk of court, Summit County Clerk of Court Sandra Current, Judge Linda Tia Dossio, Bishop Joey Johnson, and our most recent former school board member, Ms. Debbie Walsh. So thank you all for being here. Thank you to the family for coming out. With that, need to swear in some of our members, starting with our newest... Oh, Pastor Diana Swoop.
Pastors Diana Swoop and Pastor Samuel Hamilton.
Hampton.
Hampton.
Thank you for being here. So we need to swear in our newest board member, returning board member, Ms. Ginger Baylor.
Ginger Baylor, do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will perform faithfully the duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and here and after to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? Did you answer I did?
I did.
Congratulations.
I never usually do this, but I felt like this is the right thing to do again. I just wrote a little something, it's not a lot, but it's just how I feel and I sniff it. As I look around the room this evening, I see and feel a sense of strong community. To see many of our pastors who have committed their lives to serving and helping our children and families every day is truly a blessing and to you, I say thank you for your faithfulness. To our judges, who do their very best each day to help our young men and women who stand before them, making difficult decisions, bestowing justice and mercy, giving many of them another chance to get it right, I say thank you. And to our other community leaders here tonight, thank you for the many unspoken acts of love and kindness you have demonstrated to others in need of your services. And to the constituents of the Akron Public School District, thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve our children and the Akron Public School District. I couldn't have done it without the help of each and every one of you and for that, I thank you.
And now for, we need to swear in our most recently re-elected board members, beginning with Mr. Alexander.
I'm going to put on my swearing-in uniform so we can't say it wasn't official. You know, and I'm not going to follow Bishop Johnson's good example, I'm going to say just one thing and it's something I feel compelled to say. It is such an honor, Bruce, that you invited me to swear you in. There are very few people in this community that have given their entire life to making our community a better place for our kids to grow up in and it's not enough that he does it around the clock during the workday, but he takes the extra time to give to the city schools to make sure that those are good places too. And I am so honored to call you my colleague and my good friend and thank you very much for this honor. If you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will perform faithfully the duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here and after to be enacted during the continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I will.
All right, congratulations.
I'm not going to say anything Ginger said it all for all.
And next on the list is, oh, look, it's me. And swearing me in tonight is Judge Nicole Walker.
I too have a swearing-in uniform, but as everybody here probably knows, nobody wants to follow one of the Judge Tia Dossios because they're a hard act to follow, but I will do my best. I have the pleasure of swearing in two of your members tonight, Mr. Bravo and Mrs. Mansfield. And I got to know them both very well during this cycle. I worked with Mrs. Mansfield and it is a great honor for me to do this, so thank you both for asking me to swear you in this evening. So, Mr. Bravo, if you'd raise your right hand for me. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will perform faithfully the duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here and after to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations, Mr. Bravo.
And just quickly, I want to thank Judge Walker for taking the time to be here tonight to swear me in. I want to say thanks to my family for being here and for always being my constant support and for letting me take them on this adventure time and again. So, thank you to Michael, my partner, and to our son, Aiden. I appreciate all of your support, I really do. And that brings us to Mrs. Mansfield.
Can I have my family?
Absolutely.
Can you guys come up?
We're shy.
Yeah. Least shy family I think I've ever met.
Put your mom up here so she can be seen here. Love your mom.
Lisa Mansfield, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will perform faithfully the duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here and after to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? Thank you. It's my great honor too.
Obviously, I want to thank my family, also I want to thank the community. I want to thank my fellow board members. This was a long and arduous process, it always is, especially those 300 valid, and we all stood by each other's sides and it was really important to us for the continuity that we were seeking because we believe in the direction this district's going, we believe in the people that are around this room and we want to convey that to the public and we want to continue to push forward and make this the best district in not just the state of Ohio, but in the country. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, before we move forward, I wanted to say again, the four people that just were sworn in, myself included, you know, we ran together this last time and what a great team we had, I think, with Bruce and Lisa and Ginger coming back and I want to thank each of you for being such fantastic running mates this last time for the Akron School Board, as Eric has reminded me. If you didn't see our video, go watch it, it's out there on YouTube.
It was cute, it was really cute.
So, I want to say thank you to you and to the community at large for electing us into our board members. I also want to recognize Pastor John Palmer who joined us and...
That's my oldest daughter, you guys have met her. Stand up, Erica. That's my oldest baby. And my two cousins back there, Wanda and Ron. And everybody else who's here, wonderful, thank you guys for your support, we love you. All of us love you.
Okay, I have also my wife, my daughter Ashley, my cousin Jeff, and all the other, my sister Lily, and he's left the door over there. So, thanks to all of you for coming, thank everyone for coming, this community, thank you all.
My husband here, my son Teddy, my mom Marge, and my son Dad.
Akron Public School student.
Oh, Akron Public School students. And my son Ted, and my two graduates, one of them actually fell on the ice today and hit his head, so he's okay. And the other, he's working in Kent, so they didn't make it tonight, but... And I wanted to give a shout out to my sister, everybody who has a treasure, they deserve a massage or something. That is such a job, so thanks to my sister, who is my treasure.
Yeah, and thanks for Connie coming from the county, Sandra Burnett from Children's Hospital, Stacy Freeman, and just everybody, you guys are wonderful, I just thank you. Always forget your names, so I...
Gary.
Gary Wyatt. Thank you. And then my cousin back there by the door, he just snuck in. Raise your hand. And this is one of my former choir members, children choir members, and she is the daughter of our choir director, Angie Gibbons, and my other co-choir director, Kim Chors. So, you guys are wonderful, this is what community looks like and this is what community does. And just like Lisa said, all the people around this table, you guys are so wonderful and significant and you've been doing the work, so I'm just back here to try to help you continue that work that you've already done.
So, our next order of business is election of president. I'd like to open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Patrick Bravo for president for 2018.
Second.
Second. You second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations? We have a motion and Bruce a second to close nominations. All in favor of closing nominations? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now a vote on the nomination. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. And so I want to say, and I'll just add a little bit to what I said a few minutes ago, thank you to my colleagues first and foremost for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve you guys. It means a lot to me. I feel like we're beginning 2018 with a lot of momentum, especially coming off of a year where we launched college and career academies, we launched, oh, we're going to get to, I forgot to take the oath, we'll get there in a second. But I feel like we're launching with a lot of momentum, especially in a year where we launched the college and career academies, we launched the I Promise School, we opened Harris Jackson, we had the consolidation of Kenmore Garfield, we're continuing the construction of Case Elementary and L at CLC, and we're consolidating our administrative operations and looking at downtown, a new home in downtown Akron. We have so much going on and we have such a fantastic team around the table and I really appreciate the opportunity to continue helping to navigate everything that we have going on. So, I want to thank you for that. Swearing me in tonight as president is Judge Ron Cader.
I don't have my uniform, but I think you do. Very proud of you, Patrick, and all the, got to know all the board members over the last few years and couldn't ask for a finer group of people to serve our schools. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will perform faithfully the duties as president of the Akron Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Board of Education and laws now in effect and here and after to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
And for the other president, I'd like to open the floor for nominations. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, Sr., as our vice president for 2018.
Second. Okay.
We have a motion and a second for Dr. Walker as vice president. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close nominations?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close nominations, all in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nominations are closed. And for a vote on the nomination, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
And I'm grateful to have Reverend Diana Swoop to do the honors of swearing in, pastor of Arlington Church of God, and very fitting, I wouldn't be on the board if it were not then to Pastor Emeritus, Reverend Dr. Bravo, and Judge, former Judge James R. Williams, who encouraged me to run for the board a little while ago. And just thank the board for their continued support and encouragement.
It's my pleasure to be here to participate in this experience of uniforms. I wear my uniform every day, my faith in the Lord, and so I'm dressed right now and have faith in the process that will go forward.
Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will perform faithfully the duties as vice president of the Akron Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Board of Education and laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations.
So, one more time, I would like to again say thank you to all of the family, to the friends, to the elected officials and dignitaries and former board members that are here tonight to help us usher in a new year for Akron Public Schools. It really means a lot to us that you took time out of your evening to be here, time to support us, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you very much. We're looking forward to continuing to serve you as your board members here in Akron. With that, we are going to take a five-minute recess, weekend, thank you in person, and say goodnight, but I'm sure some of you would like to get one with their... So, five-minute recess. All right, we are good. So, we are back in session at 6:00 PM. For the public record, just to go over board committee chair, co-chair assignments, clustering committee assignments, I'm going to read those off really quickly. For legal contracts and board policy, Bruce Alexander and Tim Miller. Finance and capital management committee, Tim Miller and Reverend Walker. Instructional policy and student achievement committee, Lisa Mansfield and Ginger Baylor. Appointment to 2018 OSBA Board of Trustees and alternate, Lisa Mansfield and Ginger Baylor. Appointment of liaison to OSBA's Urban School District Advisory Network, myself. Joint Board of Review, members and alternates, myself, Reverend Walker, Tim Miller, and Lisa Mansfield. For cluster and ward liaison assignments, for Bookdale, Tim Miller, East, Lisa Mansfield. For Ellett, Lisa and Bruce will be splitting that one to cover. Firestone, Ginger Baylor. Kenmore Garfield, Reverend Walker. North, Bruce Alexander. The specialty schools, myself, and I will also take at-large counsel. Establishment of the 2018 board meeting dates. Q, Mr. Bruce Alexander, thank you. Yes, we talked about that today, it's never on my sheet, but that's right. And that's the counsel for urban boards of education representative, and that's Mr. Alexander. Did I miss anything? If not, do we, are we voting on meeting dates until we have the ones due?
They're published. The laws are published.
All right, so they... And I don't think we have any changes to those, do we? The only one we had today was April 9th, but that's...
Yes.
So, that one will change due to NSBA, we'll change that one. Everything else, I think, was fine. We moved joint border review to April 10. Does it make sense to also move that board meeting date to April 10 and just adopt it now? Is everyone okay with that? April 9th, several board members will be at the National School Boards Association Conference, that's a Monday, April 9th. This afternoon, we moved joint border review meeting for that date also to Tuesday, April 10.
Will he ever be back?
Everyone will be back. We'll have to come back to that one. So, we'll adopt it as-is and change it when it's time.
We'll change it to Tuesday, but I think I'm flying back home too.
Yeah, one issue, so I think we're going to adopt it as-is and then, all right, so we will publish those then as-is and we'll change that one to a later date. Community and school reflections, any of you?
I have one thing. I was able to attend this past weekend, it's called the Mothers on a Mission, the 11th Annual Martin Luther King Drum Major Celebration, and it was at the Community Fellowship Chapel on Virginia Avenue. And it was a, the program was entitled "Education and Universal Requirement," and it was very nice because we had several of our Akron Public Schools staff that were honored and they received an award, along with a couple other dignitaries who we received awards as well. And I just wanted to make sure I got a chance to name those because I think they should be recognized for getting awarded and being in education and doing a good job. And the names are Cheryl Conley, Brandy Davis, Monica Davis, Angela Harper, Danielle Henderson, Kristy Johnson, Paulmina Vicente, Megan Lee Wolfarm, Dawn Wilson, and Michelle Marcus Current. All of them were there and they received awards, as well as some of our other dignitaries, senators, judges as well. So, I wanted to say thank you to them and make sure that we congratulate them and let them know that we appreciate the work that they do. Thank you.
Mrs. Mansfield?
I just, I wanted to tell all of you about a few things I got to go to. Public gets to hear, just, they're awesome and they're along for the ride, but I wanted to let you all know about two programs that they did at Firestone for December. They did two plays and what's unusual about that, because it's not unusual for Firestone to do a performance, but they did Silent Sky, they did that performance in Planetarium, which was a fascinating place. It was about a person who helped discover, oh, gosh, you would think I could remember, but it's been a couple, six weeks, but things about our solar system and through math. So, it was very fitting that we were surrounded by the stars. So, what a fantastic use of space and an unusual way to tell a story. So, it was, it was just fascinating. And then, for the first time, they did It's a Wonderful Life, the radio play, and they did that in their black box theater. So, all of those spaces that were put into that, performing arts are getting used and were both filled. As a matter of fact, they extended Silent Sky, it was only supposed to run one weekend and ended up running two. So, the one Saturday that I was there to see It's a Wonderful Life, they were running Silent Sky in the afternoon and It's a Wonderful Life in the evening. So, really, I don't know how the principal keeps track of that building, he's always there, bless his heart, but he really works hard. And just a shout out to the arts department because not only were the theater folks performing, but there were art exhibits in the hallways. It was just a wonderful holiday season there. And along those lines, I know you all got inundated on your calendars with the performances that were at all the buildings. Well, I tried to get to a couple, I didn't reach quite my goals, but I tried. I did get to go to the Firestone Choir performance, that mostly as a parent, but that was wonderful as always. I got to be at Court's Path to see their performance, Mason, Sam Salem, I got to see a dress rehearsal, which was also just as fun because the kids kind of had their guards down, it's a little more fun to watch them work through that. And then, right before break, I did get to go to Jennings and see their performance and the highlight of that was I happened to not only be an alumni, but I played the violin when I was at Harrison Jennings and recently donated that violin to, through the summit and found out that a young lady in the Jennings Orchestra, who's in their beginning orchestra, is playing violin that I played when I was at Jennings. So, that was one of those, ugh, moments. So, that was really fantastic. So, that program is huge. If you get a chance to see the band and orchestra and choir programs at Jennings, I know those buildings are, really have a high population, but the students are highly involved in the arts and the teachers there are really working very hard. So, when those come around in your spring calendar, if you get a chance to check out any of those schools, they did a fantastic job. And last but not least, hopefully you saw yesterday's paper, the program was actually highlighted in that, the Firestone team participated in robotics competition, it was a regional competition that was held at Firestone. They were expecting 48 schools and I think even with the sub-zero temperatures that they had, and I know the Pickerington bus came up and didn't get heat the whole way up, the kids were about frozen when they got here, they had about 40 schools still show up to participate and it was fascinating to watch. So, again, if you get a chance to go to one of the robotics competitions, I know we've already got a few teams qualified for state who are hoping to make the world competition, but it was great fun to watch, the next time that comes around.
We have no request to address the board, so we need approval of... Okay, so we need approval of the regular meeting minutes for December 11, 2017 and special meeting minutes for January 4, 2018. We have a motion. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
And superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 50 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any questions, comments, discussion on personnel? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, abstaining from, I think it's 44, is that correct? Sorry, my...
Forty-four.
Forty-four, thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from number 45 and 46, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes, abstaining from item 47.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration two motions and nine resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Roll call please. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
And finally, Mr.
President, I have before me for your consideration 17 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the business affairs items. Any questions or discussion? I would like to offer an opportunity for Ms. McWilliams Woods to speak on item number 12.
Tonight, we're bringing for your consideration the actual agreement between the Akron Public Schools and Akron Children's Hospital for officially what was announced back at our designation ceremony with Children's Hospital and actually the superintendent's State of the Schools address. We're at a place where now we have formalized with the help of our legal counsel and Deborah Folk our agreements with our partners as they come on and name an actual academy at North High School, the Akron Children's Hospital. We have language around what that means, what we will do and what their commitments are. So this is the first agreement and then you're going to start to see multiple ones in the future because we're actively working in negotiations with a number of businesses and organizations and universities. So probably about once a month, we're going to keep coming back and you'll see the next wave of agreements coming forward.
And we definitely want to say thank you to Bill Konsonite and Akron Children's Hospital for all of their support. What an exciting opportunity for our kids, so look forward to seeing the rest of those agreements. Any other questions or comments on business affairs?
Just on question number five, a question I asked Mr. Pendleton earlier, and I just give an opportunity for him to talk about a little more. We're okaying funds for the new, the combination of the development space from hot and small together, and it's coming out of general fund. My question is coming out of general fund because you had been saying that we're not going to spend any general fund money on this. And I just want to give Ryan an opportunity to tell us why that's happening and how it's happening, if you would please.
And I'll add in items five, six, and eight are all related to that purchase and did my very best to explain a somewhat complicated accounting system in an email and followed up with a phone call. As we consolidate these two buildings, we will have savings. We structured the debt in such that our first interest payment is until September and our first principal payment is until early in 2019. By then, we should be realizing all the savings. So we do need to issue purchase orders where there are funds now. We're going to use a couple different pots of money. At the end of the day, though, we will, upon Mr. Miller's recommendation, we will keep a ledger so that you can see the pledge of not increasing the dollars as a result of purchasing 10 North Main is going to happen. So yes, they are issued against general fund for now. Those funds will be reimbursed as we realize those savings, as we pass the bond issue. And we'll use some of those TIF revenues that we had, have this application into the Department of that. So it's a little bit complicated, but we'll uphold that pledge for sure.
And you will, each time that money gets reimbursed, you'll let us know there's reimbursement so we know this is being deducted until it shows that we cleared. Okay.
Running ledger, we may place that on Google Drive. That'd be a good thing to do.
Okay, great, thank you.
And so along with item eight, that is, we're purchasing or will be purchasing the existing generator that's out of the apartment now.
Correct.
With the prevented maiden history being provided to the Akron Public School.
That's the generator that was sized and built specifically for that building. We have an assessment performed on it, open market, and we went out to source it just like we would if we were going to bid, and we saw prices in upwards of $150,000. The fact that we don't have to move it and it's matched and paired already to that building. It also gives us more sufficient backup. If you remember, we have some servers off-site for some of our backup purposes, so it's a good pairing to this building. It's got, and by the way, we had a professional assessment done on it, and it's got a 20-year estimated useful life. So a little bit insurance there.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
No report this evening.
No president's report this evening, treasuries report.
No report.
Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy.
Okay, I have for the second reading of three before we ask for approval. Policy, revised policy, 1130 Conflict of Interest Administrative Staff. Revised policy, 3113 Conflict of Interest Professional Staff. Revised policy, 4113 Conflict of Interest Classified Staff. Revised policy, 5200 Attendance. Revised policy, 6110 Grant Funds. Revised policy, 6320 Purchases. And revised policy, 6325 Acurement Federal Grants and Funds. This is the second of three readings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Finance and capital management committee?
No report.
Instructional policy and student achievement?
No.
Any unfinished business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
Yes, there are a couple of items. One is our resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Akron Board of Education and the Akron Education Association regarding the consolidation of health benefits network providers.
All right, so we need a motion on the personnel supplement, the establishment of the new position. Do we have a motion on that?
No, MOU.
Yes. Resolution to approve the MOU between the Akron Board of Education and the AEA regarding the consolidation of the health benefits network partners. Do we have a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on that?
Now, is this different than the new medical, the new Taladine that we're initiating?
Correct.
Because the, my understanding is the union has agreed to the Taladine model as well. So how does this, how do they work together?
In some of our bargaining unit contracts, we had an upwards of three medical providers that we had to contract with at Soon Care, Medical Mutual, and Alt Care. There was a time and place in our bargaining unit contracts for that to be a necessity. And over time, now with our coverage, Medical Mutual is who this is ultimately going to consolidate into. This is for whom? This is our general medical insurance that covers all of them. The disruption was very, very low to leave the other two smaller ones. We increased our footprint in terms of our buying power. We go out to bid on medical insurance every year, and remember, it's that $50 million spend. Our discounts are a little better. And then all of our TPAs, all of our billing remittance and claims, which Kathy McFay's office has a lot of back and forth with those TPAs. This consolidates at Intel One, one provider. And I would say that HBAC did play a very active role in consolidating these, and we do appreciate their help. This is, in our early estimates, this is multiple six-figure savings for the healthcare. It is a separate component to Taladine altogether.
Any other questions or comments on that resolution? Hearing none, roll call please. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, for the board letter supplement, we have a resolution to approve an urgent necessity boiler replacement at NSCLC. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on that?
I was looking at that, I went back to business affairs, but I knew I hadn't seen that, it was on my mind. Now, this is a brand-new building. Is this under warranty?
No, I mean, NS has been in operation for a few years, I think more than five, if I'm not mistaken. But we've had issues with the air-coo boilers that you all have approved the replacement of those, and I think this is one of the last air-coo boilers in the district. For whatever reason, they have not lasted long. We've replaced them at which other buildings? Barber?
Excuse me, Robinson Barber, I get several. And unfortunately, we have a few more to go.
How many, how many more do you think?
I'm sorry.
How many more do you think? You said we have a few more to go, so how many other buildings?
Mine have 22.
We'll discontinue those sometime, but we're still having some issues with the remainers, remaining boilers.
So were there any warranties on the boilers?
Typically, that warranty will last for the first year that the building is in operation where the contractor have to come back and do the replacement. These will come out of the facilities maintenance fund that we've had to put into place, so there is adequate funding in that budget to do this. And that's what it was there for.
And we'll have to do this probably for 20 other buildings?
No, not 20 other buildings. We discontinue using the air-coo boilers at some point in the past as we were having some issues with them. So we go with Cleaver-Brooks, which we're getting on a state term, you know, so the pricing is good, and then we just replace them with those units.
Any other questions or comments on the boiler replacement? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
I was reading, you were saying. You have one job, Mr. Pendleton. All right. We have, we do have a need to enter into executive session this evening pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering the dismissal of a public employer official of the district. Revised Code Section 121.22G3 to meet with board legal counsel, discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are the subject of pending or bringing up court action. I am requesting a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Before we do that, may I do a point of order so it's on the board? I said no president's report, and I forgot. I will be getting together, Reverend Walker and I will be getting together, and we will be sending out some board retreat options and dates, so we will get that to you. Also, as we did last year for our scrimmage, we'll be inviting and rotating a third member through scrimmage throughout the year, so we will get that. We last year started with the person who was furthest from having served in a leadership position, so we would likely do that again, and that would probably reach into the first and then moving our way through, so stay tuned for that. Had been in discussions before the holidays, we've been invited to take a hard hat tour at Stark State's new facilities, so they had offered some dates. We couldn't get anything coordinated too easily before the holidays. I asked if we could do it after the holidays, so I'll be following up on that. And Lisa had asked, and I know she followed up with the superintendent today on looking at dates for us to look at in case of ELC as well. So I don't know what I was thinking when I said no report. That was my report. We have a motion and a second on the executive session. Any questions or discussion before we head in there? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?